All right. Good morning. It is Tuesday, June 22. And this is the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting that is originating in the administration building and we are continuing to offer access via Zoom. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. and ask that please stand if you're able and join us in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, is there a motion to adopt today's agenda? They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
We will now move on to public comment number one. This is the comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you'd like to make a comment in your online, please unmute yourself via Zoom or if you're in the public meeting room, just come on up forward not seeing anyone. So we will pull public comment number one. We'll move on to agency reports. We have the annual, YSS annual report. I'm not sure if I'm seeing Andrew Allen join on yet. I see more people just kind of popping on, so. See if there's somebody from YSS who wants to speak on the. Series. Good morning, Andrew. Good morning, Andrew.
Hi. Are you ready for us already? Thanks so much.
Got your report. Whatever you'd like to go over and highlight for us would be great.
I really appreciate you taking the time. Obviously have, you know, extensive, long-term relationship with Story County. We are successful because of the public-private partnerships that have been formed. We just celebrated our 45th anniversary as an organization. So grateful for those that were able to come out and join us for the celebration. But the work goes on. In our 45th year, obviously faced quite a few challenges from a delivery standpoint in the midst of the pandemic. As you think about our mission, which is to create hope and opportunity, the way that we deliver on it is through connections. And the way that we connect with people generally is face-to-face. So very proud of the team across all four of our program divisions for adapting and, you know, really ensuring that we continue to put the mission of the organization first and foremost. I'm proud to report that we have had a successful year. I am grateful every day for the team that comes to work every day at YSS and, you know, works up at the needs of families and kids first. So, you know, we work in four different areas. Prevention, kind of on the front end, and that's really where a lot of the asset funding comes in and where we'll, you know, spend the majority of our time providing updates today. Child welfare, which you're also supportive of. So as you think about some of the crisis, foster care and adoption, or emergency shelter services. Behavioral health, which has really grown quite a bit over the past decade, I would say. As, you know, we've got over 30 licensed clinicians at YSS. It's about 10% of our population. We've got over 330 employees currently serving 20,000 kids and families a year. So a real specific emphasis on our outpatient clinic, counseling, therapy, medication management, and then our inpatient substance use disorder treatment program, where we're one of just four adolescent providers across the state. And then the final area that we're focused in is transition, and that's really services for homeless youth or near homeless youth. And Story County assets have been supportive from a transitional housing standpoint. So I thought I would just open things up, let you know that, you know, financially, it's been a tough year. We did get the PPP and we got that forgiven. You know, we really worked to reinvest that back into the organization and also our employees. You know, we gave employees one-time support in the midst of the pandemic. You know, we've really worked hard to try to retain staff through the pandemic by treating them well. That said, we are facing significant workforce shortages. Over 80 open seats in our organization. And so if you can imagine trying to deliver on our mission by creating connections with 80 open seats, it's tough. I saw the overtime report over the weekend. I actually reached out to some folks that are on the call with me today. And people are taking double shifts and working back-to-back and putting in a lot of hours because we've just had such a difficult time, you know, finding employees. We've been working hard on wages. As you think about funding contracts, one of the things that you're doing is you're providing funding to support services. Those services ultimately are delivered by people and we're paying those people with the funding that comes through the county. We've got lots of different funding sources, but oftentimes the rates don't cover the full cost. And so we do have, you know, some part-time employees making as low as $11 an hour. We're trying to get to $15 an hour. I think we might even be behind at the point that that happens. Our competitors, unfortunately, fortunately, there's some other child welfare contracts recently that got increased rates. And so what happens is when DHS kind of works like this and you get increased rates for some contracts, some of our, the folks that are in similar space are now able to pay $15 an hour while we're still getting the reduced rate. So it's a financial struggle all of the time. I think that this is purpose-driven work. And so, you know, we try to lead with very flexible schedules. We offer employees four and a half weeks of vacation, trying to, you know, entice them with the flexibility and doing everything that we can to retain the quality workforce that we have. So workforce is probably our biggest issue. Facilities continue to be a need. We looked at window replacement in the building that I'm sitting in right now. It's on the Nationalist Park, Reggie. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. I'm proud of it every time I come in. $350,000 to put in aluminum-clad windows. And the city just turned down that. They want wood windows, so the estimate's probably going to be even more than that. A lot of the residential programs that we deliver are in old houses. And that, for a lot of years, was great because it creates a home-like environment and that's important for us, given that this is the kids' home away from home. That said, those buildings weren't also made for 45 years of service delivery to high-need kids. So you're well aware that we've been looking at a campus location. We stopped, kind of paused things in Story County while we finished up our North Iowa project. We've got that fully funded. It was a $4 million project and is halfway complete from a construction standpoint. And we've identified a 53-acre parcel in Story County with a Cambridge address, donated land in Timber and Prairie, where we hope to build a central Iowa behavioral health campus. So we're in the midst of kind of still a quiet phase from a fundraising standpoint, but you'll sure be seeing some of the communication be coming as it relates to approvals from a special use permit standpoint on that campus. So I'm, uh, was here to just do the introduction and then turn things over to the team. Jerry Bug, longtime YSSer who's an expert in her space around prevention and youth development, is going to take just a couple of minutes to share some background about the prevention programs.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
There I am. Okay.
We can hear you, but can't see.
Yeah, I don't see that I have an option of my face. And I apologize. Let me see. Yeah, it doesn't look like I can. Well, prevent, I want to, first of all, thank you for your continued support and certainly the extra mile you went this year with helping us spend down our Kids Club dollars. All of our programs certainly were impacted by COVID. You know, most of our programming was virtual, although we did go into some classrooms. You may be familiar with our Teen Maze project, which was a week in the Boone Community Center, where all the schools participated. This year, we created some virtual stops along the way for students. And five of the school districts in Story County participated and we got pretty good feedback. So kids really felt it was impactful on them. All of our family development programs were virtual. We're just beginning to be able to do them in person. So we're talking about how to go about that. Kids Club were rebounding from a very low population this year. And the summers are pretty full, which is awesome to see, which will certainly help financially. Summer enrichment, this was a program that didn't happen last summer. This summer, we have programs going in Nevada, Collins-Maxwell, and Ames School Districts. And we're seeing pretty good numbers, not quite as large as in the last year, but I think we have 85 in Ames, about that in Nevada, and about 55 in Collins-Maxwell. So they're all underway and very much suffering from the lack of personnel. As Andrew talked about, probably over half of those 80 openings are Kids Club assistance and Summer Enrichment assistance. And then we have professional openings throughout, too. Prevention, lower numbers. Next year, we are going to be introducing a suicide prevention program. So we're pretty excited about that. We serve quite a lot of different programs. But again, this year it was tough getting into schools and our numbers are significantly down in some of those programs. I am going to introduce Felicia Watkins, our mentoring manager, because I think she has some very creative ways that they were able to pull off the mentoring program without access into the schools. So I'll let Felicia share a little bit about her year and then answer any questions you have.
Good morning, Felicia. Can she hear us? Is she a panelist?
Yeah.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, she has.
Felicia, can you hear us?
She says she's talking, but I don't see her mouth moving.
Yeah, and we don't hear anything.
Jerry, do you have any other updates? Felicia, you can come down to my office if you want.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hear myself and I couldn't hear you. My name is Felicia Watkins. I manage the YSS mentoring program. As Jerry mentioned, we had to get really creative this year for mentoring as the school districts we serve in both Boone and Story Counties were not allowing volunteers in the building. So that meant that most of our students did not have the opportunity to meet with their mentors face-to-face. So we developed alternative mentoring options for our volunteers and our mentees. We did a lot of pen pal. There was opportunity for youth to write letters and draw pictures and do activities through pen and paper. We implemented virtual mentoring options through Zoom and Google Meet. We also had some matches engaging in phone calls and emails. So although we did not serve as many youth as we normally do, we still maintained strong connections through the school-based program. Additionally, we also serve YSS Rosedale Shelter and the Boys and Girls Treatment Houses. And we were able to have those matches start meeting in person towards the end of the fiscal year. So it has been a challenge, but I think that our program has learned a great deal about how we can continue to connect people even when the face-to-face is not an option. And we did get a lot of great feedback from mentors, parents, and school personnel about how important those connections were in light of all the challenges that COVID brought on. So again, thank you for your support of the mentoring program.
Thank you.
Jerry, did you have anything else?
No.
If not, I'd introduce Andrea Dickerson, representing our Behavioral Health Branch. Andrea.
Okay. Are you able to hear me? Okay. I thought everything was set up and then it had me rejoin. Okay, we're good. So, good morning and thank you also for your support. I'm representing the Behavioral Health Programs. And here in Story County, we provide outpatient therapy, psychiatry, behavioral health intervention, skill development, services, substance use treatment, along with the integrated health. So our health home that covers Story County and a couple others. Definitely COVID, as I'm sure everybody says, has impacted us. So last spring, this spring, yeah, a year ago, we moved everything to virtual within just a week or two. So all of our in-person sessions got moved to virtual. Since then, we have kind of case-by-case started bringing clients back into the clinic for their four sessions and their services. And over a month ago, about all of the therapists started coming back and are now working in the clinics. And so we're just continuing to increase the number of clients that are coming in for assessments and sessions. And it's kind of, some parents and families still want to do it virtual, which is fine. And we're accommodating that and have that flexibility. But we are starting to have more and more sessions in office. The one thing we found that was kind of a blessing in this whole situation was our no-show rates dramatically, dramatically is not even a strong enough word. It was so significantly decreased that, especially in our substance use population. I think it went down to below 1%. I mean, which is just unbelievable. But individuals were able to connect virtually and they didn't have all the barriers that sometimes our families experience with transportation, getting off work, getting the kid to their appointment, what have you. Those barriers were removed. And so our no-show rate just significantly decreased. Ironically, as we've started to bring individuals back in the clinic, our no-show rate has started to increase because even though they had the session scheduled in our clinic, we've had some no-show. So that's, that's kind of a give and take that we're going to have to continue to work through. But in our schools, we, some schools allowed us to come in and start doing our therapy again. Others, we connected virtually. And so we were able to accommodate whichever platform the school used. And there was a couple different ones. We were managing some Zooms and some GoToMeetings and different platforms, whichever the school preferred. But yeah, it's definitely been a learning process for not just us, but all the families we work with. And, you know, just that resilience of my staff to be able to make the changes as needed has been pretty impressive. So. Do you have any questions for me as to the services we're providing or how we've been doing it this year?
Andrew, this is Lisa. So I actually have one question for you. So since you referenced that your no-show rate had dropped since you were able to provide it virtually, are you going to look at continuing to off? I mean, I know you said that some families are continuing to want that. Are you going to look at increasing that or kind of working with scheduling so that you continue to minimize that no-show rate?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't want to necessarily like threaten that you're going to have to go back to virtual if you don't. But it's more about, let's talk about what was the barrier that caused you to not be able to show up for your appointment? And then, you know, if it is that virtual is what seems to work the best, then we'll do that or have some sort of a hybrid. Couple times a month, it's virtual. A couple times a month, it's in-person. We know that for our substance use clients in particular, we do need to see them in person time just because of being able to, you know, really see what's going on. But yeah, flexibility is kind of that, the thing that we've, we've definitely had to embrace. So, yeah.
Thank you.
The bill that we signed at YSS last week, actually, you know, I assume the county was following that pretty closely because it changed the way that mental health funding was implemented. But YSS got behind it because of specifically, because of the parity that's provided from a payment standpoint for telehealth, just knowing how rural we are and how important that is. And I think it's a great insight supervisor headens that a lot of families are going to continue to pursue and hopefully continue to pursue telehealth services. Thanks, Andrea. Terry Johansson is going to talk about emergency shelter. Emily Bloom is our director. I'm sorry, Emily. Now Emily Rebeloso is our director. I just had Emily Bloom on my head, on my mind, and she's Adam Attorney Lee. So Terry, do you want to talk about shelter?
Good morning, everybody. I can't believe I'm connected. I kept getting booted off and rejoined and here I am again. Can y'all hear me?
We can.
Oh, great, great. Well, good morning and thanks for this opportunity. Especially want to give a big thanks to the Board of Supervisors for all your support for all our programs at YSS. We really, really appreciate your continued support. I'm here today to talk about our emergency shelter, Rosedale Shelter in Story County. And first, just want to underscore that Rosedale Shelter, we're really proud to say that we were the first emergency youth shelter in the state of Iowa and are proud to be located in the Old Town area at 703 Burnett. And just knowing that we were the first shelter is really heartwarming and we take a lot of pride in that over the years. Continue with the services that are so important to our families and kids throughout Story County. We're continuing to serve youth ages 12 to 17, males and females. And a lot of these youth are experiencing trauma and have certainly experienced abuse or neglect. And some are runaways and homeless and needing that timeout and/or safe haven, so to speak, in order to get on their feet and move into the next step in life for themselves. Many are involved with the Department of Human Services and really are working hard to get family conflict resolved and/or if, if family and home is not an option for the youth in that moment, we're working very hard to access services and the best level of care, higher level of care for the youth that might be the best match for them. Still want to focus on providing that 24/7 helpline service. And I think that that was especially crucial throughout this year and a half or so, a year and some months regarding COVID. Just being available and having that emergency helpline available to our families within Story County was pretty crucial. As you know, our shelter, probably know our shelter does not shut down. We run 24/7 and we're there for those emergency calls and/or placements as availability is there. We're there to serve Story County and prioritize wherever we can for short-term placements and/or long-term placements in order to manage the crisis on the front end. Our goal for our non-system use that are placed at Rosedale throughout Story County or from Story County, our goal is really reunification and working with the families directly and getting them engaged on the front end. And hopefully that, that placement service is short-term and we're really creating the diversion service and/or, you know, the goal for reunification for our families and kids. That doesn't always happen because there, there could be significant trauma on the front end and more time is needed. So we're thankful that we're able to provide more time. And if, if we do need to involve the Department of Human Services for additional support, the families, we help the families with that process and move them in that direction as well to gain that additional support. I would say COVID truly, as everybody has said, impacted our workflow and our staffing patterns. And, you know, we dealt with a few staff that, that actually were impacted by the COVID virus and moved towards coverage and managing that to the best of our abilities. What I would say is that we have a tremendous team of staff that continue to cover for each other and support each other so we could keep things going 24/7 and make sure that we're maintaining safety and, and our client-to-staff ratio patterns. And very important for us. And also maintain the CDC guidelines as those came out and continue to change over the course of time. We continue to manage in that same way. One of the things we experienced that we, of course, weren't anticipating was just a decrease of access to supplies or inventory. And to a certain extent, food, you know, our, just our hygiene and sanitizing supplies were hard to access because inventory out there was tough for all of us to access. But we did a really good job with our marketing team and reaching out to the community to get support where we could. And donations came in to help support us as we were running low on donations or, excuse me, on supplies. And the donation and recruitment of those efforts were really successful and really helped us through this past year and a half. So managing that was at a different level than what we had seen in a long time. But our community is just always providing us a wealth of support and we're very, very thankful for that support. I think that other than that, our, our trends were that, that, that we really experienced were some of the placements we saw were decreased over this past year. And part of that was just families really needing to connect either virtually and/or by phone with us on the front end and not necessarily wanting to come into a community environment while the virus was spreading. And while we had all the protocols in place and, and certainly we're managing that and safety was our priority, obviously that impacted folks coming and going. And that's why our crisis helpline and just being available 24/7 was so critical. But we were there 24/7 and we were there and available for those folks that needed us and reached out to us both from the Story County region and any other referrals that came through the pipeline that we could assess throughout the state. I would say that's probably the bulk of, bulk of my update. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Last but not least, Toby O'Berry. Toby leads all of transition services across the organization. So generally, we're focused on kids and families who have our transition into adulthood. So Toby runs quite a bit of the programs across the state. Hope Matheny is our local contact. She happens to be on vacation. Toby.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate the time to share a little bit about transition services. Like Andrew had mentioned, so we work with youth between the ages of 16 and a half to 24 years old who are homeless or at risk of homelessness in Story County specific for this funding. And we wouldn't be able to do this work without your support. So thank you so much for believing in YSS and believing in transition services and even the community members that we serve. Just kind of as a brief success story, we had one youth from Story County who moved into our program, our housing program, was able to graduate this past May from high school. They raised enough money to buy a car. uh secured a better job, uh and then exited out of our housing program and signed their own lease here uh in Ames. Um, and so the the funding that you provided um is going to support community members uh in Story County. So just appreciate the the belief in in our mission and and the work that we do. Within uh this reporting period, we served twenty-four uh homeless youth in Story County. Uh, fourteen of those youth exited our program um and ten youth remained in the program. Most of our outcomes are tracked around youth that exit. Um, we call them the levers and we also have the stayers. Um, for the fourteen that exited our program, ninety-three percent exited to safe housing uh during this report period. Um, which we're very proud of. Um, the youth that come in are precariously housed and and very vulnerable and and at risk. And so for them to stabilize, get back on their feet uh and secure safe housing uh is a big deal for for our program and and our community. Another big initiative um that we're very proud of is that seventy-one percent of the youth um that exited our program were able to remain uh employed um or be able to remain in school. And really, education and employment are two core components that we work with youth uh to help them get back on their feet and be self-sufficient. Uh, and even during the pandemic, we were able to help youth secure jobs, uh retain their jobs and and safely stay housed. Um, we didn't halt uh during the pandemic, still uh took youth into our housing programs, worked with youth um throughout that entire time. Uh, like Terry had mentioned, you have to improve your uh cleaning uh component and the costs went up uh for to do these um uh programs in a safe manner. Um, and but it was still uh an amazing feat for for our agency and and for transition services. Uh, so we have ten youth who are still um stably housed in our programs um within Story County. Um, and we're working towards uh their kind of successful exit uh back into our community here in Ames. With that, I'll see if you have any questions on transition services.
Question? Um, this is Linda Merkin. I just want to thank you particularly for the work you did because the research I've seen on people who are in trouble is that transitions are the most difficult um times and they're the times when people fail most often. In particular, when you're seeing youth transiting out of foster care or other things into um independent living. I think they they really need help. So I I just want to say this is the service that I was most interested in of hearing about today. And I want to thank you for making sure that those those youth um transit somewhat hopefully successfully into being independent adults. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It it's really um wise of the board of supervisors to understand the fact that if we intervene now um as they transition into adulthood, um, the cost to the community is far less um supporting these youth, lifting things up uh and helping them be self-sufficient versus the drain on the hospital and and prison and police and fire department um on the backend. So YSS is very innovative and wraps supportive service around youth. Um, to be successful, it it takes a little funds on the front end, but it's uh very worth it for youth who who stay in Ames and in Story County on the backend.
Thank you.
Toby, this is Latifah. So do you do you see the youth that are successfully exiting um staying in contact or are they able to continue um to access support once they've transitioned out of transitional living?
Yes, yes, that is a great question. Uh, our support doesn't end as they they exit out. We're a wh- what our youth typically need the most is a stable, positive adult in their lives. Um, and they typically don't have a good support system after they exit. So we have significant in kind of engagement opportunities, one month, uh three months, six months, twelve months. We have some youth that still drop by and maybe do some laundry uh and connect with our case managers or grab a meal and say hello. Um, kind of like what a mom and dad does with that twenty twenty-two-year-old who's kind of spreading their wings. We're still here for them and can provide guidance and helping youth understand how to work their oven when they move in their own apartment a couple of months later and but you're right, it it doesn't end while the time they're in our housing program. We have kind of what's called aftercare uh and follow-up services after they um exit the programs.
Pretty proud of aftercare. We run it statewide. Uh, we subcontract with other folks across the state who are in local communities, but Toby's probably got the biggest program and fought pretty hard with the legislature or advocated hard uh two years ago to expand aftercare services uh to age twenty-three. So it used to end at at twenty-one. Now we can go up to age twenty-three, as you well know. Uh, you know, brain development, kids look fully physically developed at eighteen, but their brains are developing into their mid twenties. And so the closer we could get to you know, twenty-three or twenty-five, uh, the better for the kids that we're serving. Well, thanks, Toby. I'll I'll just say two more things and then uh opened up for any questions. I I know we've taken a lot of your time, but we really uh value the opportunity to present annually. We used to do it quarterly, which I think uh was okay, but annually gives us a chance to highlight all of the programs. Uh, Terry mentioned crisis stabilization. I wanted to say it one more time. We've been offering crisis stabilization almost for a year. So these are non-system-involved kids uh who are not part of DHS or juvenile court and to help intervene and keep them out of the system um for up to two weeks, we can provide that crisis stabilization to get them connected with uh local services. The region has been paying for it. We've applied for chapter twenty-four accreditation so that Medicaid will pay for it going forward. But uh on July one, all the regions are required across the state to have this service for kids and um YSS is one of the few entities that's providing it in North Iowa and all of CICS as well of a a couple of other regions. Um, Toby didn't mention it, but we got a federal grant to provide um housing for survivors of human trafficking in Story and Boone County. And so that program is almost fully uh um ramped up. It it takes a while to, you know, identify the right folks that are going to be successful, but um, but there's no shortage in need of kids that have been trafficked, believe it or not. Many of them come through our residential addiction treatment program. And then finally, uh, we we tried, uh, we started Reggie Sleepout in Des Moines because that's where Reggie Kelsey uh passed away. The event's raised more than two million dollars. We tried it in Ames for a couple of years and just floundered a little bit, took a year off, and now we're back. Uh Reggie Sleepout at Home kind of in a virtual nature, uh September twenty-fourth through October third, would invite each of you um to sleep out on your own. Um, you know, snap a selfie. Uh, it's easy to do. You can do it with your family. It's a way that you know, there's a lot of fundraisers out there, walks and runs and black tie events that I know you guys participate in, but this is something where you actually you don't experience what it would like be like to be homeless, but you have a little bit of discomfort and can sleep in your backyard and, you know, talk to your kids or neighbors or um you know, church about the issues as it relates to youth homelessness. So would love to have you join us at any point over that two-week period.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Any additional questions?
I have a couple of general questions as well as a comment. First, I want to thank you for your formatting of your report. I think having all of your programs address the same set topics is a good thing. It's just get through it because it's a lot of information, but it's well organized. Like program descriptions because we don't look at this a lot, so it's good to have the reminders. So I appreciated that. I do have one question. I I see you being really strong when you're reporting data and I like that. You have a lot of activity data. We provided this many services. We did this. When it gets to outcomes, you seem to rely pretty heavily on self-report by your program participants. And while that's important information, I don't think that's all of the information. Um, I would like to see you making the link between your activities and longer-range outcomes. And I know that's difficult because that's talking about program evaluation rather than simply reporting on what your program is doing. But it's also the information that really tells you in the long run, are you, what good are you doing? I know you can't do in-depth program evaluations every year on every program, but I would encourage you to talk to some evaluators, say at Iowa State or you and I, who both work a lot in juvenile and criminal justice and see if you might find some, you know, might target some of your programs. You start with one program and do some longer-range longitudinal studies. And maybe you have them and we haven't seen them, but I'd be really interested in longitudinal, where are these kids three years later? How do they in comparison, how they compare to like situated kids who didn't get the services? So just a comment. Okay. Any response to that? Do you or?
Yeah, you you bet. I think that um, you know, in some programs, uh, we are going to be better at evaluations. In some cases, we do hire external evaluators um to come in and look at the program. And in other cases, we are implementing evidence-based programs, right, with when when done to fidelity or or should be guaranteed a specific result. So I I definitely um uh care a lot about quality. We talk about, you know, I I think you described, you know, how many people do you serve would be a a an output, but who is better as a result of the service is an outcome. And so um, we're intently focused on it. We have a full-time person that's just focused on quality assurance. As you might know, we're CARF accredited, so it requires that we do, um, you know, really specific outcome-driven data. And so I I think as I I reviewed it too, I I saw some of the same things. There are a lot of outputs here. Um, and I'll follow back with the team and see if there are some other things from an outcome standpoint that might uh more clearly demonstrate um some of the results. That that said, um, we could be better. Um, and and I know that um it's it's an area that we continue to focus on. So thanks for that feedback and we'll continue to look at opportunities to partner with Iowa State and some of the longitudinal studies. Those are the questions that I have as well as somebody who has served by YSS and long-term recovery. I'm always looking to connect with with alumni and uh um and and know how they're doing um, you know, one, three, five years later. Good feedback. Thanks.
Resources are always going to be limited. And we want to know that what we're doing is really making a difference. And I I'm glad to hear you're looking at evidence-based practices and that you're taking things that have worked jurisdictions and been shown to work and bringing them here. But it's still a point, even when you're adopting a program from another area, there may be differences. You need to do a fidelity kind of kind of evaluation to say, is our, has our implementation been faithful to the model and is it working with our clientele? So enough on that. I I see you nodding. You understand what I'm saying. I appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to follow up with was your workforce shortages. Could be, I mean, there's various reasons for workforce shorts. Workforce shortages. First, you're just not getting enough applications. Second, you're not getting the qualified people you need. Or third, is it, you know, and if you're not getting enough applications, why is it in that you mentioned wages? Is, what do you think is the biggest struggle you're having? Is it the people out there that have the qualifications? Or that they're not coming to you, not paying enough?
Yeah, I I hesitate to say this because it sounds um, at the time that we made the decision, it sounded pretty generous. You know, we're we're far enough away from it and I I think it just demonstrates uh what a severe issue this is. Uh, it's it is twofold from my standpoint. It is the wage and and it's the wage tied to the difficulty of the work. So uh, a year ago, after we got, maybe it was nine months ago, after we got PPP, we did, we talked to a lot of attorneys, you know, we said, what are we going to do with these funds? We said the very most important thing that we could do is support our workforce. And so we did one-time appreciation awards or retention. I I forget exactly how we worded it. We worded it in a way that made sense. For our direct care staff, we gave them a thousand dollars net. Everybody else got five hundred dollars. And and I thought at the time, this is an investment in our employees that's going to um support retention. And something like from a direct care staff standpoint, those folks that got a thousand dollars, we've got less than twenty-five percent of them still on staff. Because we've had such a hard time recruiting folks, people are sometimes put into a position without the, you know, enough training because we're we're desperate to get them onto the floor. We're asking them to pull in extra shifts. They've got generous PTO, but they can't take it because w- we we need coverage because we've got um twenty-four seven facilities that require a specific ratio. So he- here's what I think. Um, there's an agency in Des Moines that's got really great rates that does similar direct care work and they're paying their staff thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a year, direct care staff. And they don't have a shortage. So when people are looking for employment, there's three things. You guys know this. It's purpose, mastery, and autonomy. And we we have purpose in spades. And so the work is difficult, but I feel like, Linda, if we if we could offer thirty-five or forty thousand dollars to do this work, that we would have a line of folks saying, you know what? I I would rather work at YSS helping kids than I would retail or um, you know, in a manufacturing job. But when you come to work for twelve dollars an hour and uh and kids spit on you and you're asked to work, uh, pick up an extra shift after you've already worked forty hours. Um, I I think that we we just burn people out to the point where even though they want to do the work, it's easier to put your khakis on and go to work at Target for fifteen bucks an hour. And so I I if if there's one thing that we are intently focused on, and it it pains me to even talk about it because I care so much about the kids and the families that we're serving, but even more importantly, that the staff that is doing this work and they are, they are we're we're, we are um on the verge of crisis as it relates to our twenty-four seven facilities. We're we're coming together as a leadership team daily to talk about what can we do around retention? What can we do? Talking with my executive committee and my board, they're challenging me to say, what can you do to get to fifteen dollars an hour? We're we're a decent-sized agency, but we will finish two hundred thousand dollars in the red this year. So how do we continue to pay people more when we don't have the reimbursements that support it? We've got to be creative from a fundraising standpoint, which we we're trying, asking DHS all of the time. I had the DHS director in my office last week saying, we need higher rates to provide this service. Um, they they hear it. I think they're going to make some progress, but for me, it's less, it is a workforce issue, Linda, but but I think it's more importantly that I'm starting to talk about a wage issue. If we could pay forty thousand dollars for direct care staff, I people would come. They would quit their retail job and they would come to work for YSS. I unfortunately, we're paying them twelve dollars an hour, which isn't fair. We we're having similar, we just looked at applicants. We're having similar numbers of applicants um as we have previously. Um, and and the turnover is just always really, really bad. But the folks that are we're worried about the folks that have been holding on for the past couple of years right now because um of how much they're working and the fact that we can't bring in new staff.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions?
Well, I I appreciate you um sharing all of that with us, number one. And two, um, I can't say enough about all the good work that that you and the agency are doing. Um, and the incredible impact that you have on children and families and um just the future of our communities. Um, so thank you also for that. Uh, I was wondering about the um the tobacco prevention and substance abuse prevention programs. Is there um in the the section talking about tobacco prevention, there's a comment um about not being sure um raising questions about um marijuana, vaping and um kratom. Um, how that falls under the purview of tobacco prevention. Is there, is there overlap um in the programming that goes into schools that allow you to be able to address kratom and uh vaping and marijuana at the same time? Or are you restricted to only talking about tobacco and nicotine in these programs? I'm I'm incredibly concerned about kratom.
Yeah, it's horrible. I was emailing last week with the director. I mean, it came up in the juvenile justice meeting, so people talked about it there. I emailed with the director of the Office of Drug Control Policy. Um, there's some, I couldn't believe it when I heard it. There's a lobby that is uh saying that kratom's not dangerous, that it's natural and it's got, you know, medicinal value, not too dissimilar to to medical marijuana or um uh marijuana. So I I think that we've got, what Asset did a couple of years ago, when you think about the money that we get from IDPH, Department of Public uh Health, th- there are some specific requirements about goals that we have to meet around education. Um, it definitely translates to vaping. I pulled Jerry on um to see if she could address whether or not it could be funded um to talk about kratom. What Asset did two years ago, I think, is they opened up some of the prevention support for YSS to be directed where we felt like the need was the greatest. And so we do have some flexibility with the asset dollars. Jerry's r- really good with her budgets and trying to put people in the right positions at the right times. And so I definitely ha- have heard our staff regularly, prevention staff, talking about kratom. Jerry, you're on mute.
Okay, I'm mute. Yeah, definitely. We can address it in our other prevention dollars, not just with tobacco. In fact, we've been working with the Story County Prevention Policy Board to take some action and do something about it. We're concerned. It's around the corner from us, big signs and sold by the library. So we're concerned and we are talking about it wherever we can. So it's part of our substance abuse prevention.
Latifah, I'll also just say, what we measure, what Jerry measures, is perception of risk. And perception of risk as it relates to marijuana is way down. And case in point, we had a legislator at Youth Recovery House two months ago. And I was, we're talking to the boys and they were asking some questions. And and these were a good group of kids. I mean, they're all good kids, but like wanting to be sober and really have had transformational sorts of experiences. And the legislator said, hey, you know, one of the things that's coming up is, is medical marijuana, you know, and even the legalization from a recreational standpoint. What do you guys think about that? And in my mind, based on the previous 20 minutes of conversation, they were going to say, gosh, you know what? That's, that's really risky, especially for kids like us that are, you know, prone to addiction. And instead, what I heard was eight boys say, huh, it's really not that big a deal. And most people can smoke pot and not have an issue. And, and they, in substance abuse treatment, were advocating on behalf of legalization from a recreational standpoint. So I, I'm on the Partnership for Drug-Free Iowa. I am anticipating it's coming. We will continue to fight it as much as we can, but we've got to bolster up and prepare for the unintended consequences because for kids, and that's where I'm at right now, for kids whose brains are still developing, there are significant issues when you start to use marijuana on a regular basis. Case in point, I have way fewer brain cells than I had when I was, you know, 16. And so I think we're really going to have to prepare to, to fight it with kids because as perception of risk goes down, access increases, we're going to see more usage.
Really, it's incredibly troubling.
Any additional questions?
Be free.
Okay, Andrew, everyone, I want to thank you all for your presentation today. Really appreciate the information. Linda had asked about the workforce, and that was going to be my question as well. I was interested in that as well. And unfortunately, that's what I'm hearing from a number of, excuse me, my allergies are, a number of service organizations that are struggling with the reimbursement rates and then how to add any additional dollars to meet the needs to minimize the turnover and have the consistency of staff stay there. So I'm hoping that that will hopefully change. And I know, Andrew, from my past work, legislature, the need to increase those reimbursement rates would make a significant impact as well in the work that you're able to do and to go towards direct staff wages as well.
We're grateful every day to be headquartered in Story County and grateful for such a supportive Board of Supervisors. So thank you all for all that you do to support not just YSS, but the whole sector.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on. You've got consideration of minutes, the 6:15, 20, 21 minutes. It's been moved and seconded, Basil, Merkin, Hedin's eye. Consideration of personnel actions.
Personnel actions is presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Hedin's eye. Onto consideration of claims.
Move approval of claims is presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Hedin's eye. Anyone pulling anything from consent agenda? Nope. Okay. There are motion.
I move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Hedin's eye. We are down to, it's like public hearing items. Consideration of the advertisement to bid for the Story County Justice HVAC Equipment Replacement Phases Two and Three.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
You bet. I got Jeff Harris with RMH Architects with me and Brian Brewer from Brewer Engineering. Working with me on this project. Let me kind of get my notes squared away. Talk a lot about numbers this morning. So we've had a few delays on this, kind of started with, you know, we're ready. We've got everything spec'd and figured out for Phase Two and Three. We're not quite wrapped up with Phase One. Phase Two was originally going to be in this FY that we're just about ready to finish up with, but delays with Phase One kind of pushed the timeline off and COVID didn't help with getting equipment. We ran into some issues with manufacturers that we offered the piece of equipment, but right now we're not manufacturing it and don't know when we're going to start manufacturing it again. So we had lead times that just weren't acceptable. So we'll start off with the funds that budgeted for Phase Two will be pushed into FY '22 where the dollars for Phase Three are. Collectively, the budgeted amount, we're looking at about 1.33 million for both phases. Most recent cost estimate from last week puts us at 1.55, roughly about $200,000 over budget, what we was looking at, most of which is from Phase Two. Phase Two, originally, when we started this process and ended 2018, first part 2019, and we budgeted for Phase Two, that was pre-COVID and and pre what's happening right now with material and supplies. So it was, you know, originally estimated at about $430,000 and we'd budgeted $490,000. And as you can see off of our current estimate, we're Couple of things that aren't COVID or supply-related that has changed since we began this project was as we was engineering for Phase Two, there's a exhaust hood on the jail kitchen. And it has shown its age and discovered that, well, we knew it, but we really started taking into consideration that it's of the old design or code only required, you know, the exhaust area, you got to make that air up, bring in outside air. They only required that you preheat it in the wintertime, but not recool it in the summertime. So taking that consideration, the amount of CFMs that that one single piece of equipment did to that jail area during the summer months, we were bringing in a whole lot of unconditioned outdoor air. So we decided to address that in this phase that wasn't originally part of the original scope. And that's about a $20,000 increase in overall cost. Another item that is not COVID or supply-related is back in 2018, when we put a new roof on the facility, the new roof membrane is significantly slicker than the previous one. So we decided to add walkways so that as you could traverse across the roof to work on the equipment, you have this specified walkway that is slick and hazardous. And that was an additional, it's called 36,000. So there's, you know, 50, 60,000 of that 200,000. And then we'll get into the Phase Two area is what we call jail support in the sheriff's office. And half of that HVAC equipment is physically on the roof. I think that's 15 total pieces of equipment, which new code dictates that there's a higher exchange rate. So the equipment got bigger. We ran into that in Phase One. With material costs, what they are right now, a lot of it's, there's a lot of unknowns and it's unpredictable. Those units will require, potentially require bracing on the roof depending on which manufacturer the potential bidders would come back with as the brand of equipment. We spec'd some that are similar in weight to the existing equipment, so we potentially might not have to add bracing to the structural steel that sits underneath the units. But to provide fair bidding to everybody, we have to provide alternate manufacturers so that everybody gets a chance. Will some of those manufacturers exceed the weight limit that the roof is currently rated for? So we tried to account for that in the overall cost estimate for a worst-case scenario. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you did a very good job. Those kind of, yeah, the highlights of things.
Yeah, because it comes down to it, it's, you know, we're, the estimate is a little over $200,000 more than what we currently have budgeted for this project. But at this point, we're not committed to anything. So I would be under the recommendation that we move forward with putting it out for bid, see how the bids come back, and if we're still in that over-budget situation, then we talk about where we move from there. Because at that point, we're still not committed to actually move forward with the project.
And yeah, we are asking them to give us two different bids. So we will have a bid for Phase Two and a bid for Phase Three. So if we make a decision to award Phase Two based on that bid, we could do that and then postpone Three or however we need to deal with Three separately, if that's the case, or vice versa. If Three comes back on budget and Two is still over, we could work that however we need to.
And I didn't have too much of a chance to go through all of these questions. I'm sorry about that. There's separate numbers for.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
And then I found out there were drawings too.
Yeah, if you look down, it's on division.
But we tried to indicate at the, on the left-hand side of each column, the Phase Two, Phase Three costs.
Okay, you have a total Phase Two estimate and a total Phase Three estimate is what I'm doing.
Yes.
Yes, total Phase Two estimate is 733,765.
No, you're, you're down. Should be 704,456, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Yep.
Oh, yes, I went, yeah, my bad. 704,456.
Right.
For Phase Two. Then Phase Three is 847,499.
Right.
And just for, since we all like numbers, Phase Three is budgeted at 840,000. And Phase Two was budgeted at 490,000.
Do you have any additional questions before we, the public hearing, we have to open the public hearing. Do you want to wait till after?
If we want to have the Phase Two, how long do we wait on Phase Three? Are they tied together?
How we kind of broke it out. Phase Two is what, you know, when we started this back in 2018, we kind of broke it down as how vulnerable we were. We started with, Phase One was the jail because it was the most vulnerable. Next one is Phase Two. So it would be of the three phases, the next one that we would is the most vulnerable because it does, the jail and the sheriff's office got dispatched to both 24-hour facilities. Doesn't have a lot of redundancy built into the original design. Now, when we get into Phase Three, that's the courthouse side of things. So it has less risk involved as far as if we lose equipment. But it's also the whole, all the equipment in the facility falls underneath what drove this was age of equipment and the original manufacturer of all the equipment was bought out in 2014 or 15, and they're no longer supporting any of the equipment. So we run into, when we have failures, we can't get replacement parts. Which even most recently, right at the beginning of summer, two of the rooftop units on jail support, one does booking and the other one did K unit, just a one of the housing units there. They both had major failures. And we even, Brian and I worked with trying to find something that we would spec for the project. Instead of fixing them units, it's just replacing with what we would end up putting on there if the project went through. And we had 16 weekly times on the equipment. So we had to, we had to repair them both. One was about 5,000, the other one was around 4,000. And to repair them, we had to use kind of universal components off the shelf. They're working, but they're not working at the rated capacity. So, yeah, I mean, in kind of a roundabout way answering your question, but yeah, we could put off Phase Three. I don't know if it would get any cheaper to put it off because it's, it's mostly, it only has two rooftop pieces of equipment. It's mostly just straightforward, replace unit for unit. Price of the units, I don't foresee, because those only come up, the jab is 13% increase roughly for the actual piece of equipment increase over the last two years. I don't know how much of that it would come down. So if it would be cheaper or more expensive down the road, it's hard to predict at this point.
I've never really seen it come down negatively.
Well, and I heard something on the news, I think it was just yesterday, about material costs that have been up since the pandemic are starting to come down, but whether they're going to drop way down or just a little bit. And then, as you say, kind of plateau and start increasing again, right? Hard to tell.
Yeah, so that's why Jeff and I worked on, we didn't want to present a number that fell under, you know, that we made it in under budget. But we also didn't want to bring one in that was so inflated, but we tried to incorporate, because there's a lot of things that are unpredictable right now. A lot of it's got to do with material. Material costs and availability, two big ones.
So units, there were 16 weeks out. Are they still, are they being ordered on?
We, nothing will be ordered until we award.
It goes to Phase Two, not Phase One.
Yeah, but you, basically, you just repaired those with the stock parts versus replacing them entirely. But the 16 weeks is probably normal or almost minimum lead time on equipment we're seeing now. Everything is at that timeframe or longer.
Yeah, that started when COVID hit because that caused us a lot of problems in Phase One because that just started. And then COVID hit most of the manufacturing plants. Either slowed production way down or completely shut down for a few months. And there's still, you know, because we had trouble getting the equipment for Phase One, which, that's why we're still just about wrapped up with it, but.
Any additional questions? All right, I will open the public hearing for consideration of the advertisement to bid for the Story County Justice Center's HVAC Equipment Replacement for Phases Two and Three. If you're on Zoom and would like to make a comment, please either raise your hand or unmute yourself by clicking star nine, or if you're in the public meeting room, just raise your hand, come forward to speak. I don't believe we're seeing anyone to make any comments. Wait another few seconds just to make sure. All right, not seeing that. We will close the public hearing. And I'm assuming you need a motion then to move forward.
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Okay, there are motion?
I move approval of the advertisement to bid for Story County Justice Center HVAC Equipment Replacement Phases Two and Three.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Hedin's eye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here today. Do we have any upcoming agenda items? Okay, now's the time for public forum number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings. While what may do so in the future. If there's anyone who'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand or click star nine. Not seeing that. All right, we will close public forum number two. Before we go on to, I remember 18, any updates from Supervisor Merkin or Supervisor Basil on assignments and announcements or? All right, we'll just move on from our assignments and updates then. And then we will move on to number 18. We're going to move into clo- or closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51C. I think Ethan is on the line. Ethan, am I?
He's here.
Oh, is he here? Okay. Oh, you want Wayne to come upstairs? Yeah, Wayne, if you're here, can you come up to upstairs, please? And then we'll need a motion to go into closed session.
We should probably get off Zoom.
Yeah, we will.
We gotta get the motion to go off.
Okay, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Section 21.51C.
Been moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Basil, aye. Edens, aye. We're moving into closed session. Okay, we are out of closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Should move, second.
Been moved and seconded, Merkin, aye. Basil, aye. Edens, aye. We are adjourned.